So that was nice. Lucky girl.
I got that.
Thank you very much. It's five P M. So let's start this special meeting. Uh, start with roll call Kramer.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Who? Here. Harris.
Here.
Service.
Here.
Uh, Shannon is, uh, attending via telephone tonight. Like to thank everybody else for showing up. Got pretty full house here tonight. Um. Okay, so, um, call for changes, review of current agenda items. Um, I'd like to make a motion to move items four A and four C to the next regular meeting.
One second.
Second. Motion is made and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Linda?
Um, so this is basically for purposes of the fact that this is supposed to be a budget meeting. Um, correct? Yes, and, and, um, the other three that are on here are just real quick. Going to be real quick. Is that why we're gonna go ahead and take care of them then?
That's my intent, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I have a question. What are we discussing for that alcohol discussion? What, what is it gonna be? Because is it for a license? Or because that others is civil now, we shouldn't even be getting involved in that. So what are we gonna discuss some about that?
Oh, we'll be going over the license application and, uh, possibly operating agreement.
For?
For the second license.
Okay, alright, fine. That's what I wanted to know.
So just a quick question on that, and so that would be the license we submitted?
Yes, sir.
And what about the situation with the current license thing? That been tackled or?
Well, we're gonna do what we can on our end. That's my intent anyway, in my opinion. We'll see what the board decides, but uh, we do what we can on our end and then talk to the state, let them know what's going on here and then see what they wanna do about it.
You know, can you do, okay.
Yeah, so, um, anyway. Aaron?
There are a lot of people in the firm for advocacy.
Yeah.
And if we're going to move based on the grounds that this will be a budget meeting, then it's either I don't think that's fair grounds. It's all or nothing. If it's just a budget meeting, then we shouldn't add anything. We did move it. We did bring up the alcohol discussion. That was the reason we moved, we turned this this special meeting. Now, part of the problem with that is anything and any, everything at all related in the T W saloon was already, motion was already made moving that to the second meeting in September. So if that could be involved in the discussion at all, then that's not really appropriate.
Well, it's not, uh, my intent to do that. So if somebody wants to bring that up, then I'm allowed to um, redirect the conversation. And that's if the board wants to go with that original motion. Do you have any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Big, all ayes. Opposed. Very good. Motion carries. So I apologize to apologize to anybody that came for those two items, but, um, we do have a lot of stuff to do tonight with the budget, so uh, I look forward to seeing you all in the next meeting. Let's, uh, let's take a couple minutes to let people. That's sure. Okay.
Not on the comment, but be to just make sure that we we include any projects that we can and are, you know, spend the, the correct funds. So we don't have to redo it.
Okay, yeah, okay. Well, uh, talk about that. Terry, taking a break?
Getting some paperwork, I think.
Okay. So we're just waiting for, um, Terry to pick up some paperwork. We'll, uh, proceed. Whilst he's done that, I'll just go ahead and make the conflict of interest declaration. If there's any board members that believe they have a conflict of interest with any of the items on the agenda, please state as such, either now or when the item comes up. Very good. Alrighty, slight, uh, they're back. Very good. So let's move on to item four B, approved payout number eight for a direct advantage. So, Anthony, that's you.
So this is, uh, so he submitted a payout back, um, um, seven thirteen, or I'm sorry, seven thirty-one, which was for the month of July. Um, his contract states he can only, you can only invoice monthly, so um, you know, that's his monthly invoice. Um, he needed a bunch of backup documentation and some other things, but we got all that. The biggest thing was that, um, it had part of a change order, change order number eight in there, and we hadn't gotten approval from D A N R until um, what was it, Thursday? I think we got the approval. So the amount that's in your packet, he added um, the seating and top sewing, that, that can't be added. I'd already reviewed it as of July thirty-first, so the, what he sent me is what I reviewed. What he sent Terry, I had never reviewed. So the amount that's to be approved is fifty-eight thousand oh four oh point two-two.
Fifty-eight thousand?
Yes, oh four oh point two-two. Um, Chuck and I are working to see that, make sure that that, uh, tops on the feeding job I take through before we approve it.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the fifty-eight oh four oh two-two.
To mix the motion, do we ask? On a second, okay, discussion? I know I did have a question, so on the amount basis application, the one oh three, that's the amount that we are changing to the fifty-eight.
Correct. He'll get the remainder of that when we can verify the grass and get it through.
Okay. So let the record reflect that this pay, this payout, uh, so it says payout eight on the agenda, but payout nine on the deal.
It should be payout eight.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so let the record reflect that payout eight. The amount that we are approving is fifty-eight oh four oh point two-two on the advice of the engineer. Dan?
So in that, I didn't get to see that contract, Anthony, is he using water that?
Yep.
Get to see, and is it gonna be the same as a V O D thing for six by six by six or?
I used the center spec, it's like a whole chapter.
Yeah, normal standard.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Are there any other questions?
Do you out there, do you take a look at some of the other things?
Yeah, I owe an idea here.
Professional opinion on that, if you think it's gonna grow or not?
Yeah, it's not doing real well, and they're not putting enough water to it, so it's just full of chuck, I said, it's gonna end up like more of a slowly, we all, gonna be all weed, and then now this year, the grass actually came, but it was from seed, from previous grass, so so you're gonna have to put some more effort, and I don't know how much fertilizer you reflect to it, that's what it is, you know? They're gonna import a lot of that with it, and you're also gonna have the same circumstances, and if Ben Line did this out here, we made him do it twice. They didn't follow spec. Yeah, so that's what I wanna say ahead of that. Yeah, yeah, I appreciate you. I got burned watch as well, so in the past, Michigan past. So, yeah.
No, quick, are you gonna be following up with him, Anthony?
Yes, I already had this conversation with him last night, yeah.
Okay.
And I told him that until my experts locally know that that grass is gonna grow, I'm not convinced, so.
Alrighty, alright, thank you. Was there any other further, uh, discussion or comments? Shannon, did you have anything?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Bye-bye, as motion carries. Next item, approval of notice to proceed, point of construction. Item four D.
Okay, so all the tiers, the, um, the tabulation, so, um, I've got I went straight from my house to here, and I left the contract that he signed in my office, but I'll get, I'll scan it and give it to you guys tomorrow, but uh, Derek, who from Quentin came in and signed his contract. And, um, he took his requirements for payment performance bonds, so he'll bring those in. Um, so, uh, that was already the, um, what we did in the notice of award. So it's just following up on that notice of award with the notice to proceed. And so we just need a vote from you to approve us to issue the notice to proceed for him to start constructing the North Water.
I'll make that motion.
Linda makes a motion. Grab a second.
Your sound second.
Okay, any further discussion on the approval of notice to proceed? Dan?
So when is the well
going to fall? That's coming, I haven't put that out of the video, that goes to advertisement. So I owe the state, um, my updated estimate of costs now that we know what that the grant's covering X amount of that North Water tank.
And you got approval to move ahead?
Yep.
To be able to put it out, so they didn't. Yeah, I didn't hear that part again.
Yeah, pardon, so there's two funding sources. There's the grant from Fester County. It was five hundred thousand, and that, that's what's funding this, uh, notice to proceed. And then there's, uh, the drinking water law, which will cover a lot of the remaining stuff, connections to the well, wellhouse. Um, changes up here on top of the hill. Um, the W R T or water treatment plant system. Uh, all that stuff's in that other package, which has to go through environmental clearances, and they just needed an updated estimate, but then issued it finally, yeah. Finding out no significant impact.
Having a boosters in there too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm doing all the pipe work, they'll let me do all the pipe work outside the, the drive, the drive pit. I'm just gonna put a straight school piece in, and then at least all we gotta do then is pump bolt that school piece after we close the valves and we're way to go, keep that to a minimum.
Have we gotten a spreadsheet yet then for the tower booster well? And what we're gonna be, that's the final thoughts?
Yeah, I'll bring that next meeting. Um, it's gonna be less than our loan amount, so it's gonna be
It's gonna be a little bit, yeah, so. Be broke out.
That'll get calculated, we, we did that, it'll be in the budget discussion. Uh, we ran like, uh, what we think it'll be or less. So it's not the two point three that we originally thought, maybe like one, what was it, one point nine, one point nine six five? Yeah, or less, it could be less. But, you know, I gotta be, I gotta be conservative. I don't wanna be the low bidder, so.
Alright, um, thank you. Yeah, let's, let's proceed with the discussion on the, uh, notice, or the approval of the notice to proceed. Uh, so is there any discussion on that? Shannon, do you have anything?
When is he hoping to start?
He's, um, working with the tank manufacturer now, so as soon as he gets word, you know, that the tank manufacturer is gonna proceed, then he can redo the redesign of the concrete foundations for the epoxy line tank, it's all been value engineered. That can take about maybe two, three weeks, we'll have that done, and then he'll probably start again.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Hey, Shannon, do you have one?
Oh, good, thank you.
Alright. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Bye-bye, as motion carrier. Okay, item four E, approval of quote for repair of the transmission at the wastewater treatment.
Yeah, so I'm quite sure why it's doing this, but it's the second transmission that the R B C system is I guess blown out the bearing or whatever it is.
Something's been here?
Mm-hmm, we, we ran for four weeks straight with the, with the transmission, it's on there now, and then it did that. So, you know, at first we were thinking, well, okay, the original alignment and stuff, and so, you know, that was an issue, and we John put in a shim and a love word, and so we were making sure that none of that was the issue. We did all the maintenance protocols that the manufacturer told us on the on the new gearbox and, um, put that in place and it ran for four weeks, no problem, and then same thing. So I'm hoping that this company in Michigan will tell me why it's doing that when I ship it to them. Um, at least the original one will ship to them, and then we'll have one, and then I can send them the other one to see, but um, I mean, to some extent, I do have to hold, I need to hold John accountable on some of this. Um, but we'll, we've gotta get one fixed and kinda get a determination and diagnoses, and then from there, I'll have a better idea. Um, the other part of it is, I wanna have this company make the shear keys. Remake the shear keys, so that when we do put the next transmission in that's rebuilt, it'll have the proper, the proper steel strength. So that shear key will fail, not the transmission.
Right.
Uh, that should never happen, so I don't know if they sent us like high strength shear keys from Apple Springs, because John told me that the maintenance guy up there made them himself, so that makes me very suspicious. He wasn't aware of the, you know, the quality steel you're posting. So this transmission that we repaired now will be protected. At least if it is some alignment issue, it'll, it'll ruin the shear key, not the transmission again. And hopefully with that can determine why it's doing that and go from there, so.
Okay, um, I don't believe there's a motion on the floor, so somebody like to make the motion to approve.
I'll make the motion for you.
And we're hoping the shipping will be lower, this is not including shipping, but it would be this plus shipping.
Alright.
Um, we think there's actually a trucker heading that way that can take it close, so we don't want actually to have much of a shipping cost talent, but we did rob that last time, so.
What do you, what do you think the total amount would be?
Um, I'd say it'd be no, uh, three thousand dollars not to exceed with shipping.
Okay, well, um, if we let Linda's motion die, if we lack a second, then we can, uh, improve the budget of three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
This to also include the shipping.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Quick question before we stop at three.
Um, yeah, okay, Shannon?
The court, the court says that it doesn't include any machining that may be required, so it doesn't include making any new parts, is that going to be an issue?
I don't think so, I mean, they got
Clean it, redo the seals, paint it.
Yeah, they've got the, the schematic diagram, um, so, and they've got pictures of it. So I guess what they're saying is, is that they're not gonna make new parts, but they'll do the, they'll fix what's, what's damaged, so.
Okay, yeah, that's a good question, Shannon, thank you. Um, so I guess I'll just go ahead and make the motion to approve this, uh, quote up to the budget of three thousand dollars for the twenty-four seventy-three to do the work on the transmission and also the shipping.
Yeah, I'll second that.
And the seconds. And then also, I'd like to point out, um, does not include sales tax unless otherwise noted, tax exempt form must be on file. So, um.
Which is that on that?
Alright, that'd be great, Terry, thank you. Okay, so that's all I had to point out on that one. Is there any further discussion? Chuck?
Uh, this is a non-rolling situation. In my mind, it's a gearbox, it might be in the brush, something or something.
What's going on?
The gearbox, the thing, or something, or that one, just probably is gonna change it out. Anyway, whatever, getting that.
True.
Um, the chair bend will be softer, that probably will save it. Depending on the price, we should have one in stock, because if it's an ongoing change, it could be able to change it out, send it on in for re-doing. Well, I don't know how much the gearbox is.
There, so the gearbox boxes are from overseas, so yeah, so we have to, that's why I wanna, I want the guys in Michigan to inspect it and stuff, because they'll take it all apart. And, um, we can find potentially a equivalent that basically bolts into the motor, bolts into the shaft, but everything between that is mid America instead of what we've got there, which could be part of the problem.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Chuck, that's a good point covered. Okay, is there any further discussion? Shannon, I can't see you out here.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, bye-bye, as motion carries. Alright, very good, thank you for that, Anthony. Let's move on to budget discussion. Twenty sixteen. So remember where we left off? Last time?
At this point in the meeting, I'm going to excuse myself, I don't have to paperwork it. Like I get.
Okay.
And, uh, to ice and ice.
Alright, alright, Shannon, well, thanks for
Did you have, did you have any other comments on the budget, Shannon?
Um, you can call me if you have any questions, for sure.
Okay.
I think we just need to pick a number for the attorney and go for there, uh, doesn't matter who's in, see just what we can afford. And I think it's going to be somewhere between twenty-five to thirty thousand, uh, based on the tips coming up and you know, any, uh, but that's an executive decision, but in the case of that might come up in the following year.
Okay.
You know, or we might need legal, so I think legal is a very important number to focus on.
Alrighty.
Other than that, just, uh, make sure we get all the grants and, you know, pick Anthony's brain before he leaves of what he's applying for and hopes to get in, so they're on on the books and, uh, Grant, Cops Grant that, uh, Eric had mentioned. That's in the process if we need to account for that. I think that's all.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, guys, I can't stay longer.
Alright, we'll rest up, Shannon, and we'll hope to see you at the next one.
Yeah, so sorry, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Let the record reflect that Shannon had to leave at five twenty-four. So we are on, are we on attorney? Is that where we left off? You guys remember?
Well, we, we avoided attorney and went on down.
Yeah.
And, um, so, um, I think we were on law enforcement. Am I, does anybody remember that?
Uh, so Donna and I sat down last week? It was last week or was it this week? When we went over the budget. Last week. And, um, tried to compartmentalize and toy around with the law enforcement budget. There were some items we, um, trends, it was five thousand for fuel on Eric's, and we, we had Eric with us on his, uh, advice, we cut that down to twenty-six hundred. There's a lot in there for, uh, professional fees, a lot in there for other stuff that we shifted into what, what that ended up giving is a chunk of ten thousand, which we shifted into health insurance, ear market for, for that. If we can take him full time.
He decided he wants the full, the
He's been begging for full time for months, but as far as
Health insurance, I mean, no.
I don't know if we can go on whether or not he wants it, because if he's full time, we have to provide it, so from a budgetary perspective, I don't know if we should.
No, um, uh, uh, unless I am incorrect, you have to give them something. So if they don't need the, the health insurance, which is what he had said before, which doesn't mean anything now, because with his wife moving, we don't know where she's gonna work or what she's gonna have. But, uh, it is, we'd have to give a stipend. So in, like, that would be like, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars to pay part of their deductible for their insurance. Well, uh, I don't know, and you'll have to look through that, because, I mean, that's how it's well, I mean, maybe it was done wrong, maybe it was never in the policy, but that's how it was always done before.
Because full time, you offer benefits.
You offer benefits, yes.
That's, that's why I say from the perspective of, like, budgeting, we have to be prepared for him to say yes, should we offer him.
So this is the worst case scenario is what you're presenting?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, if, if for some reason that he doesn't want to go that route, then we can reallocate to a different area, is what you're saying as well, right?
Yeah, and this is all, this was all within law enforcement, so we didn't move anything in and out. Terry found more money and put it in there.
Yes, we did.
What we had looked at was just taking, trimming some of the fat from some of these areas and either putting in wages, but when you were looking at it, it was like, alright, well, just throw them in health insurance so that there's a buffer there, even if it's part of the year.
Okay. Very good. Yeah, it looks to be
And so did you discuss with him the, um, what was it, the professional fees? That, that was, um, like, um, when he arrests somebody and has to go uh, go to court and, and all of that. I, I think that's where the professional fees was. I'm not positive of that, you guys, but, um, because if he arrests somebody and needs to go to court, that's, that's a total different expense, hourly and mileage-wise and all that, so, um.
I just know the charge in the right now is just from Golden West setting up the emails and stuff, that's always, that's on the professional fees, that's what it's gonna be.
That's in there now?
Yeah. But hopefully, when you have to do that.
Yeah. Do you have a question, Anthony?
I have. I'm here on four B.
Hey, Manu.
Let's go over the budget and then we can talk about that afterwards, that's big. Thank you. Thank you, and then if you, if you have to go, just let us know, we can just shift to talking about it right then.
Okay, yeah, no, I don't have to go up there.
Okay, alright, thanks. I don't wanna, I don't wanna keep you here. Less, want to be here. Alright. Where are we at with law enforcement, this is pretty much the the best allocation, you guys think?
Law enforcement, at least in the interim.
So we'll have to think about it before we pass the final budget to see if we can find some more to put in there, I mean.
It would be eighty-seven thousand to do full time at the rate we are offering possible health insurance to Matt, which area now. We need to budget for eighty-seven thousand.
So then the wage would be the eighty-seven less the health insurance number?
Yeah, well, everything would be the eighty-seven less the health insurance number.
Okay. Alrighty, so you all ready to move to inspections then? So, Dan?
So, with this eighty-seven grand, man, is that going to be after you get certified? And is there any guarantee of him to stay?
We're not going to do anything along the lines of a contract that puts us in a position where we're trying to tell him we can't leave his job, that's just, that's not it's not a professional thing to do, everybody can always quit their job, all we can do is really try to get to him and try to make sure he has everything he needs and that we're doing the best or we can be until he'll stay.
So that, there is no contingency, what he does satisfy, or this does not take effect unless he satisfies his certification.
Yeah, this is next year's budget, so, yeah.
And that also includes using our vehicle with our insurance, with our equipment.
So, is that right?
It was a better idea.
Yeah.
Using all of our equipment, that's this number here.
Yeah, so for example, well, the one thing is we're putting the, his sidearm on him as far as the responsibility, ownership, maintenance, repair, any of that, so that's something we'll set up in a disbursement, the, say, like, this is, it's your, your headache, your problem. Ammunition allowance for training and duty, though he probably, yeah. But yeah, now, the only and, and uniforms, I think, I think easiest way to do it is also to do, do it like that, give him a stipend, stipend for uniform rather than us having own, maintain at the city, own maintaining uniforms, like, here's a set of endures, making sure this is used to keep the uniform in condition. But, yeah.
So where's that looped up here for all of them, where do you discuss?
Twenty-three dollars now, or isn't it?
Yeah, next, after certification.
Twenty-two? Three, twenty-three. Which is still lower than the average in the area.
I'll have to see what you can do there. Alrighty. Is everyone satisfied then? Alright, thanks. So, professional fees, expense for inspections, that's pretty much just a buffer account, right? Because the inspections are intended to be covered by the inspection fees with permitting and everything.
Sure.
That's the intent. Okay, is everyone okay to move on to the next one?
Yep.
To the streets.
Terry and I added a little money to that account too.
Okay.
What was it, twelve thousand, Terry? Well, it, you know, it doesn't have to be that, you know, you guys, if, if you wanna, what the deal was, Terry can probably explain it better than I can, but we had twenty-four thousand or twenty-two thousand? Twenty-four thousand dollars that came in that had basically had to go out.
We had, that was more revenue than we had, we were showing for expenses, so we were thinking about the balance, so we had to figure out expenses to apply that revenue to.
So we took and added it, well, first thing we did was add, if you go to the first page, we added to the election. And the reason we did that is because of the all the petitions going around that we have heard of, that there might have to be another election due to all these petitions. And so elections cost money. And so above an average is two thousand dollars, so we added for one election just in case, and in hopes that it would only be one. We already will have one in, in June that we could add things to. So, yeah, careful there. So we, that was where we put the first two thousand, and then we put the whatever it was, seven thousand or nine thousand into law enforcement. And then we put the remainder into the street because that was what we remembered as being the most important things to the public, so. And it, but if you guys wanna rearrange that so that more goes into law enforcement, or if you think we need two elections, or if you think more needs to go in the streets, I mean, that, that is a discussion we can have, but that's how we did it, so.
So, now that money that came fishing parks is paying for their breakdown, that, it's been there. No, no, it's gonna go, go to the general fund of revenue. Oh, every, anything, I mean, you even have to go to the revenue account, and then you would spend it, I don't know. But you're, like, your general fund expenses has to be huge, general fund revenue.
Did you guys figure out where that extra money came from?
That I found, because we were bringing in revenues, and I think it had to do with, it came from the water sewer, we had extra money, maybe children were getting.
Yeah, I mean, I vaguely remember during our talks with the it's not the surcharges, but the rate increases that we were getting ahead of some of the expenditures that we're gonna have in the future, do you remember that, Anthony?
Yeah, so since we're not paying anyone yet on the SRF loan, that surcharge that we're collecting for its surcharge, but we're only paying alone for the wastewater treatment plant. So, and the difference is, is like eighty cents per user. So that adds up every month. But regarding to start paying on the SRF loan when we complete finalize the job, so by October, we done with, you know, that's the deadline. The SRF loan payments will be due. That's your charge, we'll need to be, we'll need to start collecting that, that's twelve dollars.
So when does our first payment do on that, when will it be, you think?
Over the end of the year, right? Hold it up and. Then yourself, and everything.
Right. So when do we need to install that to make sure we have that money then available for that payment?
Well, I think we need.
Need to do the twelve dollars.
Yeah, we need to pass the resolution this.
ASAP?
This fall.
This fall, okay.
And it was supposed to be sixteen dollars. But we looked at, we spent like about an hour or so on it with Waterworth, and we figured that we don't need that much because of the one jump of ten percent. And we brought, figured out what it would need to be, got it down to, I think, twelve bucks.
That's better. Every little bit helps. Okay, good.
Okay, so, I mean, is there a way to confirm that that's where this came from?
Yeah, I was I was showing the revenue. And basically what I did, Anthony had done yesterday, what he did is went through Waterworth to show what we were showing for revenues and marrying what we've shown for expenses, and then have stuff these to match that. And that's kind of how it came up too.
Alright, one, one thing I just wanted to check was that if it was extra revenue due to us passing rate increases early, should that revenue stay within sewer, or is it okay to disperse it throughout the budget, that's just the one question that that I had, and maybe it's not a question of legality, but that's just one thing that I was wondering.
You'd have to do a transfer in or out to do different funds, so. There would have been a general fund. I guess I'm not, I'm not sure.
I would say that just contributes to your, your policy. So, all it does is, it means your cash position will be elevated temporarily. But honestly, as time goes on, costs go up.
Okay. Dan?
I know, I know, we had access to water sewer in different situations. We never did transfer out from, in that department, it can use it, and then my journal means everyone was a sewer related.
We're not transferring out of any fund into a different fund, that money was in the general fund, and we just reallocated it to expenses in the general fund. Originally, I had had a transfer in, but then we found where because it would show, because you'd have to have a transfer in to like your expenses and a transfer out to your revenue to do that, and I originally had that, but then we when Linda and I looked at it, we took that out, and so, yeah. Somewhere, I think, just making some of those cuts and redoing some of the revenue, because it was in the general fund. Yeah, that's where we found, we had the extra money that we could allocate it to the election. It was like twenty-four thousand in the general fund, so we allocated it to the elections, the street budget, and law.
So then the extra revenue from the rate increase is just in the sewer fund then right now?
Yes. Yeah, sorry, I, no, and I, I missed focus, so. Yeah, because originally I did have a transfer in and out, and we, when I sat down yesterday, we, we tweaked that and, yeah.
Alright, very good, sorry about that. Wanted to kind of clarify for everybody here. Okay, very good, so are we doing well on streets here, I mean, that's a pretty big hike from last year. And then we've got lots of work to do, so.
But, but I, I don't wanna feel like, you know, Terry and I made the, the choice by ourselves. So I, I wanna hear from you individually, if, if you were okay with it, or if you think more should go into law enforcement, or?
Anything, anything we get to either of those is good with me, we'll, we'll.
We'll work with it, okay?
Yeah, I mean, if we could, if we could develop a plan for the twenty-twenty-six year in the streets and and see if we can do it, do what we wanted to do, and then have money left over, then we could move that to law enforcement.
I gotta get Mark Wiley some photograph of the breakdown, I'm gonna take Ferguson development and chop it up into chunks and having to quote out each chunk. That development is absolutely shredded, I think, like, it's and as opposed to the gravel road in the center of town, that development is inconsistent, it's difficult to maintain, difficult, it's just a difficult development, so break it into ten, twelve, maybe fifteen thousand dollar chunks. This is what you can pay, this is what I can do for that amount, whether it's McDermott, Donna, Ferguson, whatever, I'm just gonna have them cover it up, and then one a year. Low impact, but also next year was talking about the school loop, which I, I rocked it out, I think we're probably, if we used Dakota, we'd probably be eighty, maybe ninety to do that week.
But we're hoping to get a grant for that, and what is that grant, is that a eighty-twenty? So if it's an eighty thousand dollar, then it's twenty thousand dollars out of our pocket?
If it's eighty, eighty percent, twenty percent. So if it's.
It's a hundred thousand.
It's a hundred, yeah, a hundred thousand, yeah, same.
Yeah, so.
So that's maybe doable, depending.
I mean, with how much tax our streets has been given, we could do a strip in Ferguson and that, I think, if we get that, if we won that grant, but who knows how long that grant's gonna actually take to be awarded, I don't know what your thoughts on that?
It'll probably be quick, because they're annual, so they go through a cycle, and so if they come out for the grant, then below maybe within six months, and then it's, you'll be able to start your the process, so.
So you think it would be in the same year? That it would be? You would think so.
Let you go in the spring, and.
Right.
Late winter, so people.
That might work.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be great to do as much work as we can on streets, but if we can make a big dent in it, have some money that we can put back into law enforcement and give we'll do a better competitive wage, then that might be a good way to achieve it soon.
Once, yeah. I think it's hard to say anything much before you get serious about it.
I know.
Yeah, it's a good point, yeah.
So that's kind of why it's such a tough.
Yeah.
We're learning a lot. He's learning a lot, we're learning a lot. Um, one thing I learned is we need, we need a pretty robust ordinance on measures laws to make it operate on par with the modern standards of law enforcement.
And so are, are you guys working on that then too? Or?
Yeah, um, yeah, that's another iron in the fire.
I know, yeah, many irons in the fire, yeah. Okay.
He's doing a lot of research himself, he's learning as fast as he can and as much as he can.
That's all he can do, I mean, we're, we're new, he's new, whatever, we just gotta put it together, so. Okay.
Okay, Dan, did you have a comment or question on?
On the streets, yeah, so are you doing any chip sale?
No, look at the year this year.
Or an action?
It's gonna be, I would think if anything, would be another round with Pennington County patch ceiling.
And then all you're doing on contract expense then is twenty-seven seventy. And then you've got, of course, your X seventy-seven brand. So your street, small mobile, annoying comes out of that. The later time you get paid. And if you tell me the measure maintenance year, you're not leaving much in the budget at all, especially if you talk about moving in Ferguson.
I, I, I get that, Dan, I mean, alls I can say is that, I'm sorry, I'm.
No, 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 we're good.
Um, I mean, it's a way greater budget than it was this year. And I know that's, it's never enough, I, I remember that from any year we've ever gone through the budget, we always would have wanted more for streets, always. And, and we've needed it too, not just wanted it, but needed it. But, I mean, I don't know where we're taking it from to get more than what we got here, which is, at the end, it is seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-one, where this year's budget was fifty-nine. So we're talking seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars more than what we had this year.
And you really think that you can do that boom for a hundred grand?
Going on recycle four inch, measured it out.
Cause it has good base. So you're doing recycled like you didn't show, you're not actually doing that at all.
It's a recycle.
Mill and resurface.
Mill and resurf, no, it's, yeah, well, he said recycle as well.
They don't have to do any reconstructive to subgrade, then it would be, that would be close. I don't know, what's the linear equation?
No.
Without looking back.
The paving, all we were gonna do, it was a hundred grand by itself, to do a five inch mat, diving a blackout. They take that all, we don't have to repair the building. They were taking three inch, we can off the top, and then fixing the ruts. Put it back together with a hundred, yeah, so by this was roughly another hundred. And then you were looking at fourth then, which we figured you're gonna be two seventy-five. At five inch mat, otherwise it would go.
Aaron found the cheaper guy. And so that has helped, and, and it's not five inch, but that is all, I mean, a- as you know, we have in, gone through before. Um, when we budgeted for eighty thousand or whatever it was, twenty thousand for a sidewalk and it came back as a hundred thousand dollar figure because of the cost. I mean, we can't do anything about that, we just have to move forward and hope that we have, can can do, get something done, you know? And do.
And even a body, the margin.
Five, five inch, so you're saying you don't think the four inch is enough? You can remind us of that when the time comes, please. Because, um, and then show us some proof, um, with other places or other things so that we can make that determination, because we don't, we don't want to spend a hundred grand and have it go to hell with the first or second truck that goes down there to, to unload, you know, groceries or whatever they're unloading there at the school, so.
What we do, you can do four and a half, you can do a five and a half. You're still, you're doing the whole base course, wear course. So you do five of the mat, base colors, mercurals, and it's four and a half, and that'll end with what happens is that helps to span over any kind of weak subgrades, so.
Okay.
Well, there can be stacks, giving those by the grant too, right? The grant, they can have stacks they want us to follow. And I need every dollar in the house.
Yeah. Which brings me to, are you sure you wanna, uh, uh, raise in your pay? Because that two thousand dollars could go right into roads or right into law enforcement. I know it's not much, you guys, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, I mean, this is basically a volunteer job, no matter what. A hundred doesn't cover what we do. I- in reality, a hundred does not cover what we do in a two-week period. So, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing stuff out there, that's all. Go ahead. I still have my hand on.
Yeah, let's, I guess one more comment on streets and we gotta move on.
Uh, on your maintenance side of it, Ken, if you're gonna do anything, maybe do better. You're gonna learn that, wanting to. There's some of them streets, like I say. Was name. Needs two loads, that needs to load. And then you start going around, I mean, I'll give you that list that I got compiled. You'll burn it up.
Yeah, I know. Well, we may have to take from other departments in the streets to do what we need to do, I mean, in the, especially in the beginning. And then you never know about, about snow removal either. Some years, I mean, I can remember a year when we were out of snow removal funds and I think it was May. You know, we had so much snow. And, I mean, but, but you, you can't, I mean. It's, it's a guess, it's a guess, yeah, that's, and the educated guess is what we're going on in the.
Okay, well, let's move on.
Okay.
I think garbage is pretty much given, right?
Yeah, it's a wash. We currently have a three-year contract with them, shouldn't go out.
Okay, and then the P and C other, P and C, yes, the it's listed here as professional fees, twenty thousand. So that's what Benishon called, and you'd be basically the town planner and engineer budgets coming out of. So the, uh, we had ten thousand plus in inspection fees. So, Anthony, uh, real quick, so we got ten thousand engineer on call, a ten thousand town planner on call, right?
No, so you have a ten thousand on call, that's the original contract, and that's.
From the office?
Which was taken up by Neil for planning. And then you have, and that's annual, and then you have, um, the ten thousand, uh, building official on call, but that is reimbursed, reimbursable to the town. You have a ten thousand dollar budget, you use, but when they pay their fees and everything, it doesn't ever go.
Yeah, so that burns slow. So that's another buffer thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then.
That's it.
There's other thousand dollars for inspections. I mean, do we need that there if it's gonna be coming out of the P and C inspections?
Is that when, is Chuck still gonna do any back inspections?
Well, we took on this, if it was.
Cause I think that's what that was before, was maybe like when he was charging for, when he was doing inspections, I think that's why we had to align him. Correct that? When you were doing like an inspection prior to finish, you would charge those fees and that's, I believe that you took it out of that account. So we can take that off of there, that, so that's a thousand dollars that we can move, where would you like that then? Law or streets?
Streets.
Do streets and try to find out more.
I'm in agreement with that, how are you, Eric?
I saw a head nod back there, do you have a comment?
No, all right. I'm, I'm, I'm just appreciative of any, anything else that's given to these departments, honestly, that's all, I don't know. I'm kind of just taken aback that there was money that was found.
So we adding it to repairs and maintenance then? Yes, thirty-eight, thirty-eight bit. That makes it seventy-eight at the end. Seventy-eight at the end, but then do we also have ten thousand dollars in planning and zoning that we can put somewhere? Because if you're saying that, right now we have twenty thousand in it, and you're saying that, that Neil is only gonna use ten and that your ten comes out of, gets repaid by.
So it's only looking at additional on call.
Yeah, so sometimes there's inquiries that come in, like, can I use this material? Um, you know, the tactics to review more complicated, uh, application, like, there's a floodplain determination, it needs to be.
Okay.
As it will get recouped, the inspection stuff all does, it recouped. But support to the office doesn't really, so I wouldn't want to move that too much.
Uh, you think ten thousand for that account, or five?
I feel like we'd be fine with five, but it's up to you guys, I mean, if you move it, then, then we still need it, they'll have to come back.
Yeah, I know. Okay, then leave it.
If, if we end up.
Yeah.
If they end up looking for developments and stuff, they'll likely, they'll likely need that, right?
Yes.
And you get all this review stuff that doesn't ever get reimbursed.
So on the building side of it, you know, there's a thought at one time that these will go up on the building project with what you guys are gonna do on the review and some what you're gonna do for your inspections. Then that will be built into this ten grand, whether it goes up five hundred dollars or whatever. Having the staff report, they've got, they'll cover the clerical as well as the engineering then. And no matter where your balance is, once you come up with inspections to building permit, review, staff report, and setting. That will be making up the contact from this then.
So, so it's the burn rate, so if there's permanent applications that come in and they have to be reviewed then that, all that stuff doesn't get paid for the inspections, do you get four inspections for the sixty-seven cents a square foot on residential bill or anything before? And if it's a simple commercial build, it's basically the same. If it's a complex commercial build, that would be a custom inspection cost based on the review. That time to review it and everything else, and just to report back to the board with any staff report that's burned within the ten thousand dollar budget.
And then residential?
Both, yeah, anything, anything, even a digging permit, like, this earthwork stuff, and to do digging for that. I mean, that has to get reviewed by the building official.
Correct, so that all gets passed on, where, I mean, there should not be a reduction, I think there should be an increase to make sure we're reimbursing and the town is making money due. You look at the city around the city, what they do on the building, what they do on their review, not that we want to be there, but we've looked at that before. And it leaves a twenty percent cushion over the top, so the city has enough to clerical and puts everything into position. Whether that developer, we had that problem before, uh, and I don't mean to take a lot of time on it, but when we did Hermosa Hills, there were, because we had an extra three hundred per inspection and setup on the clerical side of it on top of the building permit. That developer can pass that on into the lot sale or any other portion of it, the town should knock that to take it again. So, and the town should have enough for administration as well as engineer. And we've always said that we should not take it, towards that, or the developer.
No, if we need to readjust our, our fee schedule, which we need to do so. And, and that will have to be before the, the first of January to match this budget then.
Yeah, we have that patient fees for other towns.
Yes, yes.
Um, three hundred was a basic number for the staff report review. That should be a minimum, you need to know where you're gonna be comfortable at and what you're gonna be able to learn. And so that way, the town is still at that twenty percent, minimum.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're gonna go over that here very shortly, yeah. And see what we need to do to build a fee schedule so that it wouldn't be too hard. I know that Terry and I and Anthony talked about that, so, you know. Get that scheduled and get her down, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So, um, so general fund total, there's really change, you just ended up moving funding.
General fund, right?
Right.
Okay, so on to BBB. So, uh, the key thing that we're gonna do on this is.
Basically just increase due to five percent mileage is in this space. It was fifteen thousand. I adjusted the revenue to math, so. The revenue would be from the after payments to those tasks, which we've been, you know, twenty-four, we got twenty thousand. Twenty-three, we've got nineteen, almost twenty thousand, I think eighteen, believe me.
Very good. So, uh, that service.
So it was a membership fund.
You pointed to disperse out of that.
It shouldn't exist next year unless we get another.
So, um, that's kind of a big question up there then.
But should we have them in there just in case? You could put it in, then you got to put in the revenue.
Yeah, I mean, you should probably put something in there, but it's hard to even know how much, because, uh, I mean, Anthony, do you have any comments on that? Listen.
The three oh one. Under jet service. Under the B and B. Under the B and B, yeah, B and B.
So basically the question is, oh, right now we don't have any money in the budget, we're doing tips. Twenty twenty-six, but, and so do you have any comment on what we may expect to see, you know? If a development were to, were to start flowering again?
So, I mean, if we wanted to have a budget for a tip, I would say the appropriate budget would be about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. That I would cover that tip, hopefully the, it would be another per finance tip, so then you wouldn't have to come out of pocket with it. If you need to budget something so that you've got. Yeah, but that would be appropriate.
So we put in the revenue.
Be like eighteen.
Well, I think, I think probably that makes sense.
That last year was gonna be a, a home sponsor, the children, I guess it was gonna go on your chills. So, that's what, so what he was gonna add. And then it was gonna then reverse as we went through the expenses of lots.
I mean, we still, we still have to have an expenditure upfront before we get it in first, right? So then this could be the bucket that it goes out of and into.
Exactly, I think that's enough.
Ready all, how much y'all want to put in there?
Eighteen's fine, eighteen in, eighteen out.
So we're, we're on to the budget part of it, but we did pass, uh, pay out for the open already.
So we need to redo that? So, wanna do that now, or what do you want to, how do you want to do that?
Well.
I mean, I think we should just get through the budget and then we can address it, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to address them and let them kind of wrap. Went back to it, helped out too, but we'll, we'll look at that again after we've finished looking at the budget and we're almost to the last page. So, yeah, all right. Okay, so being eighteen on the tip, you know, the water.
So on, um, on the water end of it, wherever the collection is, the, the budget expense reports, so, oh, I see my name's on there. Chuck's name is still on there, Benish's name is on there. Repairs and maintenance, ten thousand, what are we thinking that will be? For the ten thousand, what repair and maintenance?
That's just a budget if you had an emergency. Based on previous budgets, we had, uh, twenty-five thousand as a budget in twenty-three, seventeen as a budget in twenty-four.
Yeah.
And seventeen again in twenty-five, so actually the lowest.
Yeah. So is that going to have anything to do with the earth on it?
This wall is.
No, this is. Yeah, not sure, water. So, so, I mean, we normally, we normally put in the cleaning of the tanks underwater. And, um, and are we going to need that within next year? Need that to be done or going to wait till the following year after we get the new tank?
I think it should. It's necessarily very deep out along the way.
Okay.
It'd be good.
Okay.
I would like to uh, finish the take on the top of the north hill and then take down the big, the old tank, it's leaking, or the new tank, it's leaking. So they can clean it at that time that they have to repair the floor. So that will be done like in twenty twenty, we'll do twenty twenty-seven, but.
Okay.
I've already got a quote for the repairing. But then we're going to put it in the thirty-four hour line, so.
Okay.
And we can't fill with one tank, there you go. Oh, just with the one tank, you need both tanks.
Great.
So, um, hope and well expense, we have five thousand in there. That, is that going to be enough for twenty twenty-six? We had ten thousand in there for twenty twenty-five, but it doesn't look like we spent any of it. Up to this point, so.
Pump.
Pump and well expense, it's forty-two, five forty.
Yeah, I know, I mean, pump would burn that up easily.
Easily, yeah.
Usually be mowed.
Yeah, it's just what it's called on here, but it's basically, uh, any expense associated with water pumping on the well. Whether it be motor or the, or the, either, either part of it.
Chemicals and testing, that we have less testing than we do, did have? So that's why that's lower. That's, that's good. Right?
And I was, I would, if you were going to raise anything, I would read the testing. We've got a new boat coming. And we got the new, the old boat coming back online.
Okay.
Some of that's in our, we can, we, I got it covered for free. Um, I sent that to you, Terry. I got, uh, Western Dakota Regional Water System to pay fifteen hundred dollars in water testing or membership dues.
Good, okay.
Still need budget for more testing after we complete our.
So you think we need more in the budget than that?
Yeah, I would look at some of your previous year's budgets.
Right?
You know, probably at least go back to what you're doing in twenty-five and twenty-four.
Seventy-five hundred? Go forward, I'm in the wrong.
You know, might actually go all the way back to sixty-five hundred, but is that the median? It seems a little low when you're on a test.
Was that grant four again?
Uh, yeah, it was just that they covered it through our membership dues, yeah, western sixteen hundred dollars, fifteen something, maybe thirty.
So we could do four thousand less that sixteen hundred, right? And then we, basically we have to fill thousand.
Fifteen, twenty-seven, forty-two.
Fifteen. So, uh, I mean, we're basically there right now, right? Is that what you guys were had planned out there at the fifteen hundred grant plus the twenty-five hundred to get us to the four thousands?
Okay, so, so we're all okay there then too, correct?
Um, you had a question back here.
Your property well expense, if you have ten thousand, you haven't burned, you can carry over, you have ten thousand over here, if you have five thousand, it's three hundred, it's twenty-six thousand.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, right? So I mean, we don't have any expenses between the end of the year, right? So, I thought that everyone, uh, think about that. We don't have any expenses by the end of the year. We roll that ten thousand into the pump and well expense, we bring that up to fifteen.
And it's more likely that we have to remove.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so it's gonna five, it's gonna be more than a razor.
Yeah, if we don't have any expenses by the end of the year, which we had budgeted ten thousand and spent none of it.
So it'll just be a transfer within the same account.
We're getting two, we're getting two new pumps in our drinking water. So both the old well, the top of the hill will get a new pump. And then, uh, new well, that is a whole, it's all new pump. Those are, those are built into the drinking water.
So if we needed a pump for the existing well, then you can pull it out of this one.
Yeah, that would be like a backup on that existing one.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea there. Good. Very, very good. So are we all good on water? Does anyone see anywhere else we can make some changes? Everything, most of the other things that are pretty much just givens with service charges, principals, entrance, et cetera.
And then we will go back to Justin having to increase that.
Okay.
So does that mean we have more revenue to spend, Terry?
We have to figure out where we're going to get the revenue.
Oh, come on. So we have to take out of one we already added to?
Right now you have more.
Yeah, right. So we have to take out of where we added in the revenue then.
Hey, uh, did you have a comment on the water?
I did on your utility expense. Because you've got probably seventeen already, five two, no, we've got a, we've got a ten, but you're going to put two wells on one electric.
What was that?
You're going to cut two new pumps in that are calling electric.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So. And there. So what percent increase should we expect to see in that utility bill box, do you think, Anthony? Is there going to be any?
I wouldn't expect this fiscal year, in this budget year, but twenty twenty-six, yeah, and the next one you will. Okay, because by the time we go out, we, we haven't had a permit issue yet. There's still another thirty day cycle. We have to select the drill or get it scheduled. We'll be lucky to have them drilled by the spring. Completely the well, put it online, will be this year, this time next year. But, um, I mean, seventeen-five was the budget we kept going every year. I don't see why we couldn't do that. Definitely won't take any additional, uh, utility expenses because you're just pushing water through it. Doesn't actually require any electricity.
Good.
You guys.
And wait till next year.
Yeah.
Wait till twenty-seven.
I'm okay with that. All right, thank you. Uh, Dan, did you have a comment on water?
So on your wage expenses and the contract expense and professional fees, how is that going to work now with Dennis? And there now is Dennis paying for Chuck, Chuck will have a new contract in that will be listed differently, or how is that going to be?
And now, um, the only thing that's kind of situation right now, we're finished with Dave, Dave Chuck would be, he does inspections for us. And so we have an agreement where he's been doing it, he's done it already, where he's inspected, that we help the people that see. The actual inspections are done by him. On what, uh, bill inspections.
But I'm saying on water wise expense, is all the water expense now through these expenses, all vanish? And then so there is no expense going to Chuck at all.
There is.
Well, say grounds, there's certain scopes of work that are on his, but he's still doing local.
Uh, one call. Uh, he's still doing, it was all spelled out in the, in his contract. So we haven't broken out water, you got a new contract then? Yeah. There's a draft contract.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a little bit different than that, but it's, it's a decent approximation. Anyways.
Certain services that, uh, Ferguson, we don't talk, you know, we don't, you, you know, treat like this. You know, the snow removal.
Right, the mowing, which is in the streets, the light, uh, snow, that's where it all, without being that contract under the waters in this basis. But you will be water sewer, and all the wages, contract expense, everything, professional fees, it is all vanish.
Yep. Yeah, you'll see what it says, Chuck said twice, um, spelled out what is, what the scope of work is for each of those. Maybe we'll just announce those.
Great. Look at that and see if that wants to go into a different bucket or not, but basically the, the monthly amounts are correct. Of the water industry.
Say I don't, I guess, I'm not pleased.
I guess in the comments there on the.
Oh, they don't have the comments, they've been gone. Sorry, I had to do a small piece.
Thanks for your, your question. You guys ready to move on to sewer then?
Yep, I think so.
Still kind of like the same deal here.
Yep.
It's mostly used repairs and maintenance. We have a lot of repairs and maintenance this year. A lot of that went to the lagoon. Oh, yeah, we tried to break it down, didn't we?
So in, in the sewer for this year, we hope to go through part of our sewer lines and, and redo them or inspect them and see what needs to be redone. Um, that's been the talk for the last several months. So do we have those expenses in here then? Or preparing for that?
Thirty-five thousand for both repairs and maintenance.
Right, so getting that grant that's coming in, we're probably going on that budget there.
Yeah, I mean, for this, for this budget, you know, we're not going to get too worried because we have the brick grant. And our focus is going to be on Ferguson subdivision and the grant is a hundred percent grant and covers all of the cleaning and television and that stuff. So we're pretty busy for the next year. And we'll cover the repairs of the tractor truck. I did get that email from you. I don't know if you had the education on that, but. Like, like get that going, then I want to determine if I'm going to be just finished, we're just going to be buying a camera. Um, which I'll share with my Omaha office, and then we'll do it, and we'll have that camera to do some inspections anyway. So we can look at that during a multi-year, based on the budget.
And so, um, I, I'm going to bring up specifically my neighborhood because there's been so many complaints right there. That's not in the works for twenty-six then.
Um, other than I talked about wanting to have a company come do some lateral lining. So we get a company to come in and do some lateral lining and then you can do it there.
Okay.
That's a good candidate. So, but yeah, I mean, you kind of want to make sure that, um, we use the grant funding.
Yes.
And we got it, part of it's getting the back trip on, so. I think once we got that going, and we kind of know the cost of operations is.
Very good. Um, do we need, if we're going to plan on that, any of that lining, do we need to add some, some money in there for that too? Very good. Um, do we need, if we're going to plan on that, any of that lining, do we need to add some, some money in there for that too?
Um. Looking at the past repairs. Some pretty big budgets in the past, though.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty big expenses.
Yes. But I wonder. Some of this had to do with little boons, I don't know, this is what you cover the little things too, right?
The sewer does, but. I know all the extra pumping, I suppose. And.
Wouldn't hurt to have another fifteen in there. That would cover some lining. It's something that gets, is an option where if the homeowner wants to make, make that option to pay for all the way to their house. And they just pay the difference, mobilization's already in the, for our project.
Mm-hmm.
And then we give them the option, because we only do the five feet. But if they want to go all the way to the house and they got a brand new line all the way to their house, they're hundreds of dollars, you know?
Way, way, way cheaper.
Pretty good deal.
Yes.
So usually we do that, so that, and that contract typically likes that. Yeah, they're already there.
Okay.
So yeah, if you want a suggestion, I would say maybe bump it to what we spent in twenty-four.
Right.
Repairs.
Okay. What we spent in twenty-four, what we did.
Spent fifty, one fifty, but I mean fifty thousand.
And that was a budget, that might be budget to be spent, I know.
And, yeah, that made the budget.
You guys okay with that, going up to fifty-one, five hundred yards.
Well, yes and no.
We've got to find it somewhere.
Yeah, right, that's trouble. Fifteen. Thought we were doing nice things by adding those, and we should have just kept it in the, off to the sides and nobody got any. I got excited about that, that's a bummer.
And we have the back truck there as a separate line item too, so should we, uh, I think we were planning on using some back truck. Get some money from the grant to fix the back truck.
Mm-hmm.
So we should probably put some in there and take it out of where we expect the grant money to go.
So the way, the mechanism, just so you know, when we're. Recovering expenses from a team of rent is that, um, we charge rent for the back, for the. Rent and labor to the grant, but then we are able to make repairs within the revenue that we generate from our rent. Just from the official standpoint, we don't charge the rent for repairs, but we do charge them for the rent of the back truck. Used to, and then we, the maintain and repair of you.
Okay. So is it?
Sounds around the record.
Is it, is it okay to have that fund be zero right now?
Which one?
The, the equipment expense?
Equipment expenses?
Um, I know we're going to have to buy some parts for it pretty soon, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think you should always have something in there for equipment expense, even if it's only a couple grand, because. What if it's something that isn't eligible, you know, like they, they find it brand eligible or something like that? We need it right away.
So would it be okay to have like, uh, forty-nine, five in repairs and maintenance to move that two thousand down to there?
Yeah.
You guys okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, Terry. B. Other than that, so it looks like the rest of it is just the essentials. Or so. Everyone okay with sewer then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So two questions on, once again, then, under wage expense here and contract expense. How much is donation, how much is the new charter? Wasn't the new guy taking all the water sewer?
The operation. Yeah, the operations. I, I think what this might be, and Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, but since we haven't adopted the new contract yet, this reflects the old contract, is that true?
Well, I thought the numbers in the new one were pretty much the same as this.
They, they are pretty much the same, but.
But yeah, right now, those are.
They'll be in different buckets, I think, at, at the end of the day.
Well, this is, yeah, so the, the contract is Chuck contract, and the professional is Benish, the two line item, just so you know.
So everything will be underneath the, yeah, on everything, and then Benish will pay purposes, other than in the snow.
I, I, I think what is going on is, so for Chuck's new contract, it'll be pulled out of different buckets likely. And this is what his old contract is, but since we haven't adopted a new one yet, which will be roughly the same amount. Uh, it'll just end up coming out in different buckets.
So then what is it, paying above and beyond, and then for a little water sewer operator? And paying for his whole contract amount is what you're saying then? We have a tune up there, huh? Yeah, but I'm still saying, he will get paid, there's still a contract amount that he always has gotten, and we're going to pay Benish on top of that.
Right, but it's, it's covered in the rating, we already have it covered.
In the rating.
Built into the rates. Yeah. What we passed in February, so.
Well, I guess that's where I'm, I'm just confused, and I, I thought that's with the water sewer, with this guy taking it over. Was going to be.
Right.
Where it would come out of you guys and not out of some expense of the town. And whatever the hundred thousand was that we're going to pay you guys a year. And expenses, then that would be where they were paying, and we weren't, since there's supposed to be inspections. That's the, so the normal maintenance stuff, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's locate, locate the business, that's something that we do that, which that would be a simple as.
Do you?
As far, yeah, we control around the use of, ground keeping around that, that's a contract, which that's, that's something Ferguson's continued to do. Um, I don't have this contract in front of me memorized, but there were scopes of work that were outside our engineering and operating scopes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we're going to have to do an adoption of it pretty soon here, so I think this is discussion, it'd be better served during that time. We can, we can move on.
And then your expenses side, but then are you considering bond up to the maintenance and what you're going to have on in your treatment plant? And the sewer side of the duty for your expenses? As we cover, this is.
Space water facilities, yeah, that's our operation.
I wasn't sure what the new treatment, yeah, built enough down here for it.
Hmm.
How big is that?
Yeah, that's in the professional fees.
Yeah, there's a certain amount that's part of the contract amount they cover with this regular maintenance right in.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, routine maintenance, it's like our, in our O M F, or operating maintenance menu, but, um, you know, other things that are. The contractors.
Okay.
All right, very good.
And we'll have a spreadsheet to know how much all the user fees are going to cover all of this then?
We have that grade structure that we adopted, so it's already, it's already in your user.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll get a full accounting of our involvement with Benish here and, uh. Be able to see where everything's coming and going, so.
That'll make more sense then.
Yeah. All right. Yeah. Okay, so let's, uh, I guess we're done with sewer, so we make the necessary adjustments there. Let's see, where it is. So you all want to take like a five minute recess and you get back to, uh.
We want to fix this, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should do that first.
Do that right now?
Yes.
All right, so let's, I guess we're going to have to go back to, uh. Item four B.
So, Anthony, please. Thanks, so it threw me off as it said at eight, so it is in fact, yeah, nine. Um, what we were waiting on is the approval of change order eight that was through the state. So most of the amount that was in, and the amount that we approved is almost right, um, there was a relation here. In the contractor's pay application nine, um, which I corrected before I left on vacation, and so, um, that amount was great, that it was fifty-eight thousand, two thirty-six, eighty-seven. So just need a motion to approve payout number nine and the amount of fifty-eight thousand, two thirty-six, eighty-seven.
Okay.
It was fifty-eight oh four oh point two-two, which, which was a error that I just carried on when I was trying to find it real quick with, uh.
So I, I think what we need to do is rescind.
Yep.
Because there was a couple of issues with that one, with payout number, et cetera, so.
Yeah.
I guess I'll, uh, just make the motion to rescind the previous motion for what was called, uh, payout eight earlier in this meeting. And then we can move on with the correct, corrected.
I'll second that motion.
Seconds. Okay, do we have any discussion on this one?
So what is, oh, there's an eight, and a nine now, and, uh, even Peter, okay. Well, confusion was, it was, they had patient nine was pending the approval of change order eight from D N R. So that's why the eight got thrown there, so, pay up nine, and the amount was fifty-eight, two thirty-six, point eight seven. That can.
Okay, so this is the motion to rescind, do we have any further discussion? Hey, seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Eyes. Eyes have it, motion carries, um, so I guess I'll make the next motion to, uh. Pay the payout number nine in the amount of fifty-eight, two thirty-six, point eighty-seven.
Correct.
I'll second that motion.
Just give me a second here. Okay, seconds, okay, let's move to the discussion, is there any discussion on this one? Hey, seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi, hi.
All right. I just have it, very good. So, let's go ahead, um, are we going to do revenues announced tonight, or you want to move that to another night?
Well, we need, we do need to discuss, um. The attorney, one way or another, we need to discuss that, the finances for that, we never did.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Right, and we also had, um, minor issues with the board wages. Don't know if we want to discuss that, we need to discuss the things and, and come to some conclusions so that the next one is just. Um, actually making it balance.
Okay.
Nothing else, everything else is figured out.
Okay, so I mean, are we okay with keeping the attorney where it is for twenty twenty-six, which is, uh, thirty thousand?
I don't, uh, we have to have an attorney, and I, I would say that's just as easy a number as any other number. Um, we didn't, we didn't fit that bill this year, but hopefully we can fit that bill or less next year. By not having him at the meetings and, and, uh, that kind of thing.
Twenty, that's that twenty-five hundred.
Right.
I like eighteen thousand. I think that's fifteen hundred a month, I think that sounds good.
So we have one for eighteen and one for thirty, can we split the difference? Make it twenty-four, so twenty, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, that's, and I'm just trying to, uh, make this as easy as possible, you know, split the difference and make everybody okay. And hopefully, hopefully get to where we can have him here less and. Be comfortable.
Yeah. I'm okay with twenty-four.
Donna, you okay with that?
Yeah, I am, yeah, but. We're not necessarily talking about eight.
No, this is just the actual fund, um, for whoever it is, and it's, you know, I mean, we have to have an attorney.
Well, but I don't think an attorney should be here, needs to be here.
All the time.
I mean, yeah, right.
Yeah, I won't argue that point. Things are calmer now than they were, and so.
That's where.
When does this have to be concluded? Um, the provisional budget has begun by October third, no, yeah, no, first meeting in September, the final back of the place. So by our meeting, uh, September ninth is when we will adopt, so. Hopefully all the provisional, and when the final will be done by October, which I assume we do it next meeting in the twenty-sixth. Are you meeting between?
So that will save us, um, six thousand dollars there to, to, yeah. To help budget or help. Equalize that.
Well, we need to find him a water and sewer.
Right.
We got a plan.
I'm sorry. Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, and then for the, uh. Trustees, I mean, I'm okay with just keeping it how it is, but, um, everybody else thinks about that.
So you have it at a hundred dollars per meeting right now?
I mean, keep it how it is now with seventy-five and.
Oh, you, you, not the way it is in the budget then?
You want to go back to the twenty-five?
How it is.
Right.
Twenty-five budget?
Yeah, twenty, twenty-five. I don't know, you all think about that. Couple extra burgers a month. We can save some money.
Well, like I said, it's basically a volunteer job anyway, a hundred isn't, isn't getting paid what we should be getting paid. I mean, if you were getting paid a real hourly wage for the work we do, it, it wouldn't, a hundred wouldn't cover it either, so what's the difference? I, I'm okay with the seventy-five, but that's. Donna and Eric, Aaron have to.
I don't know, I, I could. You told me you were okay with abstaining from this hard stuff.
We'll donate that.
You just started a donation.
Yeah.
That's funny.
All for any push.
We're doing the twelve thousand?
Uh. Yeah, I'm okay with it, I don't know.
You go back to seventy-five to end of the year, maybe.
Well, it's not my retirement fund.
You're going to have to work a little harder, honey, work a little harder. You're gonna have to work a little harder, honey, work a little harder. Get another job, job number four.
You're, you're decreasing your expenses, you're gonna have extra revenue now in the general fund.
So a five minute break?
Yeah, let's do a five minute recess and we'll reconvene, what, what do we have left to do?
Nothing.
Revenues.
Want to do the revenues tonight, we kinda have to, right?
Well, we did the revenues already.
You changed expenses, and now we gotta go back and increase your expenses. We shouldn't have done that.
Okay, let's do a five minute recess, or let's do an eight minute recess, reconvene at six fifty-eight. Thank you.
Oh, anybody thirsty?
Yeah, I'm thirsty.
Okay, somebody will reach you one in there. Top shelf, there's top shelves cold ones, honey. Top shelf of the refrigerator in there are the cold ones.
What, the whiskey bottle?
No whiskey, just water. You leaving, honey? Well, because there's no whiskey, you're gonna leave.
Yeah, mine too.
Did they have good results or bad results?
Follow the leader, I think there's bleeding toward that.
You want money, don't you?
Back north, you know, going north south.
Right.
You gotta, it's in your contract. The barbed wire tents? Goes north south and east west.
Yes.
Yeah, right now you got.
So what is the process of how to do?
It was barbed wire there before. I don't know if we can look at the land respects and all that, I talked about that.
Yeah.
We had talked about the expense there, right? We just put barbed wire back. Um, that's like the simplest thing, the more difficult treatment, so that's a mud hole that's several feet deep according to Rob, so. He needs to be able to farm that, so. And that was done, I said, what are we gonna do, and Rob said, well, maybe we'll mix dry with it or something, we'll figure that out. You know, at nine o'clock at night, which was eleven o'clock, and then his time, I think we were gonna figure out a solution, which we did talk about. Yeah, so, so that's a month, the period, it was the thirty-first of July, so I know he tried this, that's why it had to be done. Because he sent his payout for the revised payout, saying straight finance, so I never saw it, I was in fall. So the first time I saw it, it was this packet, but I'd already signed the payout after correcting the calculation errors. But he said it was fifty-eight oh four oh, and so it was actually fifty-two, it was like a short change, so I probably thought, but I fixed that, I sent it back to them. That's what was supposed to be approved tonight, and so that's what we approved, and the next, next step will be the next quarter, right, in the month of August, we only got, so we can do a payout for the month of August, just like we did the month of July, so, we're almost done with August. You know, we have to get rid of this part of it, so remember, if town goes bankrupt because we reversed by the state fast enough, then. That's why we can only do one month. Right, yeah.
Yeah.
That's from pretty much here, we can go over things. I just wanted, you know, if there's anything I could need to get done. Just trying to finish the book, you know. The school looks great out there, they're happy with it, they follow it every time. Yeah, there you go. Okay, so I can get out of here, so I'll go over there.
Sixteen?
Yeah.
Five wheel.
Yeah, I know, that was.
For the whole clutch pack.
He is not even there.
Five wheel, you definitely don't want to resurface, but I don't have a number, because I need more.
So like.
Probably all lanes.
Thirteen hundred bucks. Because we're just gonna pull it from our funds and reimburse ourselves from the grant, there's that whole process of reimbursing. Yeah, but we gotta get that rolling.
I, I don't know, I guess I'm gonna call, like, you know, I guess my.
Is, uh.
You know, try to deal with water. Well, they talk about it, they talk about swinging.
I guess that's what you guys, you guys denied was.
I think if we get that strap completely removed, with radiators, if you do swing it dry, that motor is, it's very simple, angular, angular amount. I don't want to lift that motor, anything other than like. Excavator with the chain around it.
Yeah, I was. Well, we gotta use the parts first, right?
Yeah.
You're comfortable with those being the parts you need, I think I'll depend on the next agenda.
Yeah, it's a C one time clutch, they're like, they're used all over in TTS.
Those are written quotes, we just want to, we can put the written quotes back up and then.
I got the bill of materials is what I have, I got the bill of materials from, um, from the manufacturer contract. Cross reference it. Standard three oh six bearing, standard C one. Yeah, website doesn't have that.
I knew how she'd feel about that.
All right. Now, seven fifty-eight, we'll reconvene the meeting for budget. Alrighty, so went through the expense, now we have to balance out the new expenses with revenue. Get your vice ready.
Get our what?
Device ready, so you can get some blood from that turnip.
Yeah. So who's that, um, who's that, Paul? What's that, is that, or is that Paul? Well, that's what we modeled, I think first we need to general fund.
From the general?
Revenue.
Where less we cut out, generally, we didn't have to cut out a. Um, I would recommend we take it right out of the sales and use tax.
Oh, you know.
And just call it, I felt like that was high before.
Okay.
We did not have the tourist season.
Right.
We were expecting.
Right.
There are some others, other things I've been able to observe working in.
Yeah.
Retail, in general, people's money situation isn't very good right now.
Yeah, that's, it's good.
Makes it twenty-seven. Nine one forty-eight. Okay? Out of sales and use taxes, two seventy-nine.
Yep, two seventy-nine and one fifty-eight.
Okay. So now our general is four seven seven two eight. And the water. The water was increased by eleven five. Eleven thousand five hundred. How much?
Debt service due, does that show up on this one?
Oh, we have to put, yeah, so we, actually, that's kind of a wash, because we just put it in the debt service, the revenue is gonna equal the what we put in expenses.
Right, so it'll show ten and ten, or twenty and twenty, or eighteen. You're right, you're right.
Yeah, you would just put it.
Okay.
Yeah, you would just.
Mark that as eighteen.
How much is it for a tap?
And I just put it in for your taxes.
For a water tap?
What do we get for a water tap?
A thousand.
We get a thousand per tap?
We only have one in here.
I would make that eight.
Yeah, we should be able to get at least eight tapped in a year, right?
Yeah.
In medicine, so we don't have any active development to.
Yeah, I can count. Five.
They're coming in next year?
To make that eight thousand to the one. That'll be. Now, I just need forty-five hundred dollars.
Now, the other real place we have flexibility is the water revenue itself. So we're talking about raising rates again.
We're gonna have to raise many ways, new resolution.
Well, all right, so let's. Um.
Do you have a question now?
I do.
And that's what'll have a change in the number of customers, right?
Right.
So if we say we're gonna have eighty mines, what would be for any new customers?
Water, um. Thirty-nine hundred.
I think we should put it in as a new customer, as much as the new apps.
If it's residential and commercial, commercial shop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And how would you?
We'd make that three.
Commercial fiber residential.
Well, if we just, we just add the forty-five hundred to that.
That's an oddly specific number.
We add the.
Your economic development activities, releasing some truth.
Liaison as much as I can.
Your data center.
Data centers, that was, that was, yeah. We would have to, yeah.
So we change the water operating revenue to two eleven five. And I can look at the total of two thirty-eight one, which would match our expenses.
Good.
So we got water.
Yeah, I can get a question on, taken from Marshall budget, we can't do that, because we're working within the same departments, right?
Enterprise.
Well, we already had five proposed in sewer, so. Do we need to raise that to eight?
Well, so that was eight more, so that's thirteen thousand.
Well, why would we have five taps listed for sewer, but only?
Yeah, right. Yes, exactly.
Unless you got, you got some commercial sewer coming in.
Not unless they're also using, it's.
Not now, that'll happen, yeah, that'll happen eventually, yes, but we have got to get those rates figured out, too.
Yeah. So then the sewer operating revenue is going up, is that what you're figuring out, Perry? So then the sewer operating revenue is going up, is that what you're figuring out, Terry?
So we increase the operating revenue to one forty nine nine seventy four on the sewer. I'll give it the total budget of six oh one three fifty six. Which will match what our pencils were, six oh one three sixty six. When our total budget was fifteen.
So this has hit them. And so that was eight more customers, you did that. Interesting, well, good caller.
I think we can see that happening.
Yeah. I mean, and that's.
You don't have the one. Yes, it's a lot.
It's a fresh tap. Taps, but new customers, we got those now. Or were they, uh, an even balance between?
Well, we got, we got Martin.
Sorry.
Remember, I have the new, that I fly?
Yeah.
They have one way.
Sorry, it doesn't fly. Okay, well, so it's like we're done then, Terry?
Yeah.
Alright, very good. Good work, everybody. So I guess we can move on to items from constituents. So, um, you can see there on the agenda, there are the stipulations there. Not a whole lot of people here, so if you have any items, then just please, uh, be respectful of people's time and. Is there any items from constituents?
Well, I kind of wanted to bring up some Marshall situation.
Okay.
The difference that we gave Custer.
Can you speak up, please?
To get the Marshall full time benefits, the difference in the cost.
The difference in cost, you know what she's asking?
Yeah, so, um, interestingly enough, we were paying, before we were paying like eight thousand at one point in coverage, but now we're basically paying dispatch. Eight thousand a year. So to have our own line one. Just general dispatch services. Um, we're paying, um. All in. Taking completely full time, full year, full time. Seventy nine thousand dollar difference. Just shy of what we were inadvertently paying to Custer once upon a time before it was figured out that we didn't need to.
Kind of, other than the fact that when we are paying Custer County, we don't have to pay, um, fuel. Um.
Well, I'm saying the entire law enforcement market, seventy nine thousand.
Right now?
Like minus the eight thousand dispatch. To cover him full time, minus the dispatch we paid the customer would be seventy nine thousand. That's the fuel, that's everything, that's the.
That's with everything.
Yeah.
Okay, but right now, we're paying how much? She wants to know what the difference would be basically. So right now, at thirty hours a month, or a week, we're paying how much, and. So it's. Fifty, sixty thousand then. Right? Somebody has to have a calculator here.
So right now, what we're paying right now?
Look.
Right now, we're paying, I mean, it was twenty hours a week.
Okay, so right now.
Twenty times fifty two is twenty thousand eight hundred.
Okay, so.
Once he certified, it'd be twenty three.
So yeah, twenty.
Thirty.
Times thirty hours.
Times fifty two, which wouldn't be full time, be thirty five, eighty. So about fifteen thousand.
Thirty five, eight, eighty.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Is the question if we were somehow able to redirect the funds for paying to Custer? And we put it on to the Marshall salary, could we have him on full time?
Well, if you guys are talking about moving him to full time benefits.
We would love to.
Hey, but I, I guess, I don't have a problem with them being moved to that, I just don't know, do we need him full time, or do we have? I'm saying budget.
Budget wise.
I mean, the way we have it now is how it's gonna work for twenty twenty six, absent some other, um. Influx of revenue that could be redirected to Marshall budget or the long term budget, so. I mean, we're just gonna kind of have to run with how it is now, and then, you know, I guess.
So probably a little twenty hours?
No. The, the budget for twenty twenty six is twenty three dollars an hour at thirty hours a week.
Yeah.
So it's halfway in between full time and what he is now, little better pay. Um, and, and we would love to, um, increase that to full time. I just don't see where the budget shows that it's possible at this time. If we would get the development that we were hoping for, either out in Preston's or up here in. Carrot Hills or, or whatever, um, then we would have more income to be able to do that. But those, those projects got slowed down a little, and, um. So we're just kind of waiting, at this point, it's kind of like, um, well, if you heard the discussion a little earlier, was. We're like halfway between putting it in streets and putting it in law, and, um. We, we've been fortunate, or I think we've been fortunate, that we haven't had any real major. Real major law needs, am I saying that right?
Yeah, nothing, well. There was like, when he first got here, there was a thing with people running out, don't do that no more. We haven't anything, had anything created, but just to talk on, so this is, we're budgeting. What we can, but we're going to be, I, I, when we went to Custer, we ended up talking with, um. Somebody in the department up there and got a list of websites, a list of grants to chase, a list of resources. Wage compensation as a part of it. Um, some of them even do have matching, like have grants, we have to match, even though it's. And it's kind of weird the way that works, like when you're matching your grant for somebody's wage, it seems kind of like a strange thing to me. But there are at least four grants that we're gonna be running. Department of Homeland Security, there's the, um, is the police, the one police one, I think it's called, is a service that. You put you in type of grants, there's like four different pathways for grants. Most towns our size who have law enforcement can't do it at, at all really without grants. Custer, they use a lot of grant, I found out they have a ton of grants to help them pay for their law enforcement, so. We actually have access to some things they don't, because we're small.
We're not gonna see him around here full time, because in the, he has to take thirteen weeks of training.
And we have to pay him full time during that time, because he.
With that being clear, so he won't be alone.
Yeah, he won't be here. Yeah, thank goodness, that's in the slow time, generally speaking, the cold weather slows. Down. Problem keeper.
And it's thirty hours you require you to do.
Thirty two hours. And, and, I mean, this is something we'll have to discuss with him. Um, you weren't in on those discussions either, but when we originally hired him, he did not need insurance. Because his wife carried the insurance, but with her, with them moving down here and not knowing, um, you know, where she's gonna be working and what's available to her. That we'll have to see how that. You know, how that comes out on that. In the past, I know the past is something, I, I need to come up with a different word other than past, because that crinkles everybody.
Prior situations.
Yes, in prior situations, thank you, in prior situations, we, um, the, the last real. Long term law enforcement person that we have, um. He, his wife carried the insurance, and so we just paid him a, I think it was a two hundred and fifty dollar amount stipend. For, uh, to help pay for their deductibles. So, uh, like I said, that, that'll be kind of a, we'll wait and see what they have available. And whose, whose insurance is better, ours, or, you know, whoever she goes to work for, that will. Will count for a lot in their books, you know, so.
Well, I don't know how much of the month is person. Moving right along, uh, anybody else have an item from constituents? See a couple others out there, no other hands. Very good, let's move on to trustee input, um, and would anyone like to go first?
Thank you, I, I am, I know that it was the inconvenient, um, situation of taking the two things off the agenda, but. But budget meetings are budget meetings, and we still are in here three, two and a half hours, whatever it is. And I would like to thank you for doing that, um, and thank you for, thank everybody, Terry, for all your hard work on the budget, and. Just thank you all for being available to this town again.
Aaron and Donna, would you like?
Yeah, boss.
Well, I don't, I, I don't have a lot to say other than I think we should have, at, at least addressed the. And at least, you know, I guess I don't understand why you don't get that off the agenda.
I mean, that's, you could have, um, just a, a quick comment on that, just. I mean, the, the discussion period on that motion. Yes, that question, but, um. I believe I addressed it in the introduction, that this is a budget meeting, and we have to move things that will likely take a long time. Uh, to move it to another meeting, so we can get through this budget process.
I'm glad, you know, yeah, I don't, I. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I understand both ways, I was putting that.
Yes, ma'am.
You get it?
I hope that we, um, moving those items didn't dissuade any interested. Parties. Yeah, hopefully we'll still see the faces, and we can still hear what has to be said, and hopefully we can move outward and onward.
I would just like to reiterate, um, I mean, it's unfortunate that more people didn't stay for the budget meeting, but apparently they were just here for. Uh, either one or both of those items, and so, uh. I mean, I guess the silver lining is that I don't think anybody had to travel that far to, to, uh, come to the meeting for either of those items, but. Again, uh. You know, I, I made the suggestion to the board that we move those items via motion and board voting. Uh, to move them, so, um, just like to thank the board and. Allowing, allowing us to kind of try and move through this budget process a little more efficiently, and I think we did that, so thank you very much. And with that, um. Would you like to make a motion for executive?
Do we need to go into executive?
I don't think so.
I, I don't have any reason, does anybody else? Okay, the one thing that I would like to mention, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it up earlier, is that, um. Due to Labor Day being on a Monday, we opted to change our meeting weeks. For the month of September to the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month, rather than the first and the third. Because some people like to extend their Labor Day weekends, and we didn't want anybody to miss, what's that?
You get to go camp.
No, I'm home all weekend. Yeah. I always kind of figured that it was.
Well.
Anyway, I just wanted everybody to know that. Out loud, that meetings are the second and the fourth.
The ninth and the twenty third.
Ninth and the twenty third, so.
Everybody, I'll ban task.
Alrighty, well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would make that motion at seven twenty four.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded by Donna. Seven twenty four, all in favor?
Hi.
I'm sure Kerry is. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.